Good evening. Today is Wednesday, December 2nd, 2020. This is the Beverly School Committee Subcommittee on Curriculum Instruction in Student Life. We are meeting in a remote model today using a remote meeting application provided at no cost to our district. BEFCAM is broadcasting us tonight. Thank you, BEFCAM, allowing for public access to the open portions of the meeting. This is allowed under the Governor's March 12th, 2020 order entitled Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the OML MGL 30A Section 20. You can Google it. This order specifically suspends the need for a quorum in the chair to be physically present and asks our body to use technical methods to allow safe and public access. We would encourage viewers to utilize BEFCAM's streaming options this evening if possible. We're also trying a captioning tool while a longer-term better solution is created citywide. In addition, this meeting is being recorded under the guidance of School Committee Chair Rachel Abel. I'm going to now turn it over to Ms. Abel to help with attendance. So thank you very much, Ms. Abel.
Sure. It's my pleasure to call the roll. Tonight, we have Jenna Chevalier, who is our recording secretary present. I'd like to confirm the rest of the members can both see and hear us. We have Dr. Churocek with us this evening.
Yes, hi.
We have Dr. Flaherty with us this evening.
Yes, I can hear you.
I am Rachel Abel, and we also have School Committee Member John Mulady with us. For our citizen representatives, we have Karen McGuire-Godot with us.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, perfect. And we have Ms. Lorgan Sudak with us.
Yep.
Perfect. And Ms. Joanne Hildreth.
Yes.
Thank you. From our administration, we are also joined this evening by Principal Greg Twombly, excuse me.
How you doing?
Good. And Principal Betty Taylor.
Hello.
Principal Julie Smith.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. We have Principal Gabrielle Montivecki.
Hi, everybody.
Hello. I saw Ms. Erin Sweeney, Principal of Cove, join us.
Hello.
Great. We have Ms. Bethany Spalansky with us.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Now, for our students, I believe I saw Ms. Virginia Betts join us.
Yep.
And Ms. Ava Mack join us.
Hello.
Hello. I need to scroll to the next screen. Let's see who else we might have here. I actually think that may be it. We're always joined with BEFCAM, so we appreciate them in the control room. And we do expect a couple people joining a few minutes late, so I will watch for them in the waiting room. Also present on our Zoom conference as members of the public are School Committee Woman Kimberly Quelo and Karen Robinson. I think that's it for the attendance right now. I'll keep an eye on it for you, John. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Just a reminder, since we are in remote, our votes for actions taken this evening will be by roll call vote, called by the chair in alphabetical order, with the chair going last. And we only have one action item this evening. And before we start our meeting, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Ms. Sudak, would you do us the honors?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you very much. So we have our agenda up on our screen. Thank you very much, Dr. Flaherty. And the first thing that we need to do is approve our meeting minutes from our November 4th meeting, 2020. May I have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And second?
Okay. Thank you very much. We have a motion approved by, I did not see who made that motion.
I did, Dot.
Thank you, Dot. And then a second by?
Rachel.
Rachel. Great.
And Dr. Morgan has just joined us as well. I just led him into the room.
Hi, Dr. Morgan. Okay, so let's, we'll do our roll call vote. Rachel Abel?
Yes.
And Dr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ava Mack?
Yeah.
Thank you. Virginia Betts?
Yep.
Karen McGuire-Godot?
Yes.
Joanne Hildreth?
Yes.
Lorgan Sudak?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's everybody. So the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And now I will gladly turn it over to Dr. Flaherty. Thank you very much, Dr. Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. Mulady. So as we look at our agenda, our spotlight schools today will be the high school, and we have an amazing musical selection, two musical selections for you. I'm going to introduce Mrs. Taylor in one moment to introduce the songs for us. And then Principal Julie Smith will be sharing all of the great things that are happening at Centerville. We'll then have an opportunity for our students to share any information that they would like to let us know about their individual schools. And then for our work of the night, we're going to be focusing on our focus topic, which is equity. We have some what would seem like non-related items to share with you, but when you take them in totality, what it really is, is it's talking about equity, which is making sure that every student has what they need in order to succeed. So we'll have Dr. Morgan, who will give an update on our Title IX changes that need to occur this year. We're going to give you an update on attendance, which is obviously something we're all concerned and focused on during this year of COVID. Mrs. Spalansky will be giving us an update around inclusion and push-in services, which is a model that the district moved to, and we wanted to give you an update on how that is really helping to make sure that all students get what they need in the least restrictive environment. And then we're going to give you a quick overview of the fall benchmarks that have taken place as we look at the learning loss, but it's actually something that happens every year. So it's how we make sure that we are making sure all students get what they need throughout the year. So I'm going to introduce Mrs. Taylor as she talks to you a little bit about our choral selections. And I just want to add one thing before I hand it over. I was a chorus kid when I was in high school. And when I listen to the work that they're doing in this remote square box world, it just blows my mind because I still can't figure out how they can get the sound they get when every student is recording separately in their own houses at a different time, and then you can pull it all together and get a beautiful sound out of it. So, Mrs. Taylor, would you like to introduce the songs that we'll be talking about? And I think you're going to share some other work that's happening with the music and choral departments as well.
Yes, I am. I wanted to say a little bit about how our fine arts programs are finding ways to deliver instruction and provide artistic opportunities for our students. I have to say a couple of things. First of all, I think Beverly Public Schools, particularly the high school, have an advantage over a lot of our area schools in that we have a very strong technology program and very strong technology access. When I was a teacher at Beverly High School and we first got started with our technology, teachers were trained before the one-to-one laptop program was even implemented for the students. And the training was how to use the computer as a tool for the students in the classroom, not just a tool for the teacher. And I think it's paid off in so many different ways. And I know talking to other area principals that connectivity or enough access to computer devices is a big problem for them, and Beverly High School is fortunate that way. But I think the other thing is that, you know, everybody's being told to think outside the box, which is not that easy when you're not sure what the box is. And I have to say, you know, our fine arts teachers are always responsible for creativity. And I think we've seen a lot of creativity here on both the part of the students and the teachers, and even more importantly, a lot of time and effort and patience being put into creating products. So let me talk a little bit about our fine arts programs and what they're doing. Lynn Palanen, and you may or may not know that according to state guidelines, singing groups cannot perform inside. They are allowed to perform outside if every member is 10 feet apart and wearing a mask. And you can see the disadvantages to this, both for a choral director hearing them all and of course, as the weather gets colder. So one of the things Lynn Palanen learned mastery of fairly quickly was to use an app that takes individual student performances and synthesizes it into a choral selection. And she's been doing that since the spring, and she is certainly familiar with it, and the students are too. So there's a lot of really great music products, productions that they're putting out, fortunately because of this technology advantage. I think the other thing, and this is for anyone here that's interested, one of the things they're going to do for their winter concert is they're inviting any alumna, community members. If you want to join the chorus in their Hallelujah Chorus, you just let Lynn know. She will send you the music piece along with a sample of what it sounds like. You practice and record yourself, and you too can be part of the Hallelujah Chorus for the winter concert. So there's another way that she's involving the community. And besides, Hallelujah Chorus is supposed to be big, so everybody should join us. And I was in chorus too, Dot, and I sang Hallelujah. I was second soprano, so I kind of...
I did it. I was in alto.
And then for the string ensemble, fortunately for strings, they can practice inside and they can play their instrument as long as they're masked and six feet apart. But I should also make note that Mr. Smith is also doing the all-city youth string ensemble as well as an after-school activity for students. And as far as band is concerned, they too recently could only practice outside 10 feet apart, but they wouldn't be allowed to use their woodwind instruments. The state has revised their guidelines for that. So woodwinds, as long as they have a bell cover over the instrument and all the musicians are wearing masks, these are masks with little holes in them. So our flautists have face shields so they can play to the side. And then we also provided individual spit guards for all our students. So if they need to wipe down or empty their instrument, it's done safely. They are now practicing in the auditorium. Everybody is 10 feet apart. So that's another opportunity that we have for our students. I should also make note that the art department has been being very creative, first of all, by giving every student an individual packet of art supplies, some basic art supplies that students bring with them, so nobody's touching other people's materials. And they also are going virtual in that they have just put up on the school's website, bhsonline.org, a virtual art gallery where they'll be displaying students' final products and final work. We usually have it hanging up in the classroom, but now it'll be visibly available online throughout the whole year. And as they do another piece of artwork, samples of student artwork will be on our website. And then our theater program, they too have the restrictions of physical distancing and masking. And I'm happy to say that this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we will be presenting our production of Alice in Wonderland. Ms. Mary Biggess is the director. That will be actors masked and physically distanced, and they will be performing in front of very small audience within the state guidelines for four performances. But we also have, BEFCAM is recording our performance as well. And as soon as it's up, we'll get the word out so you can watch the kids in Alice in Wonderland. So those are just some things that are happening in our fine arts program in general. So I wanted to let you know that we're trying to keep our extracurricular going and our opportunities for kids to show their artistic and creative expression. And I want to thank our teachers for, you know, keeping that going and giving kids an opportunity. You know, Dr. Flaherty asked me to introduce the songs that I know she originally submitted for, but I didn't preview the two that you had picked, so I can't speak to the titles.
Okay, we're going to be hearing the selection "The Funky Dredle" and "Let It Snow."
Thank you.
(Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow.
And now "Let It Snow."
(Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. (Singing) Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow.
Well, that should certainly put us all in the holiday spirit.
I hope you noticed that one of your SISL members is a member of Vocal Ensemble. Virginia's in there.
Yes, such amazing talent. Puts us in the holiday spirit. And according to the weather, we may actually get that snow this weekend for a little while. So now we've heard from the talent of our big kids. Now we're going to see all of the wonderful things happening with our littles over at Centerville. And it's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Julie Smith, the principal. Give us one minute because I am going to stop sharing my screen so she can share her presentation with you.
Sure. And I'll welcome Deja Jones, who's just joined us as well.
Julie, I stopped sharing, so you should be able to start.
Oh, I hope so. All right. Are we there?
We are there.
Okay, awesome. That was a phenomenal performance. So I love the festive tone that has been set. Before I get started, I just want to thank Dr. Flaherty for creating this opportunity to share a little, some things from Beaver Nation. And while I have the time, I want to thank members of the school committee because when I was thinking about tonight, I was thinking about all those excruciating meetings over the summer and the deliberations about opening school in the fall. And, you know, we have had such an amazing experience with our kids at the elementary level. And I thank you for creating that opportunity for us and for our families who are so grateful. I just, it is amazing what consistent schooling is doing for our kids. And we wish that more kids had the opportunity such as ours. And so whether they're in the remote academy or they're with us every day in school, I think the children of Beverly are served very well. And so thank you for that. And, you know, thanks goes to all the services that are working in concert with that, with our food service and our transportation and DPW. Everybody has been amazing to really turn this into a great experience and one that I know that people were really hesitant about at the beginning. So I just thank you for that. And I will say my one final thank you is to the Centerville staff, right? So I'm here, I'm the lucky one who just gets to show up and share their work, but it is their work. And they have brought so much positivity and creativity to teaching in a pandemic that it's been exciting. And it's been so exciting that sometimes I kind of forget that we're in a pandemic. And so I also thank them for reminding me because I can get carried away with all the exciting things going on. And they're like, Julie, we're in a pandemic. Like, let's slow the roll a little bit. So I thank them for keeping it, you know, all manageable and exciting, truly. This time, you know, as teaching in a pandemic does, right, there's so many challenges, and it's also creating lots of opportunities. And so our work that hopefully we'll share with you tonight is how we're sort of managing the challenges and seeking out those new opportunities for this time and hopefully in ways that makes us better going forward. Our highlights tonight are outdoor learning, which you'll hear a lot about, and our community events, cultural competence, and our remote engagement. Those are sort of the four highlighted areas that we've been focused on in the fall. And, you know, when we were putting this slideshow together, I had invited staff to contribute some of their thoughts, some of their photos. And so I'm going to unroll this more like a photo essay because there were so many and I couldn't leave them out. So there aren't a ton of slides I'm going to read to you. I'm just going to provide some brief commentary as I click along. Again, outdoor learning, I think that you will see every elevator, every school celebrate this. And I think that it was really exciting because when we came back, we were thinking about how to teach safely and taking our teaching outside. And what we've noticed over the fall is that, you know, we may have started by taking our teaching outside, but it was slowly evolving into how do we use the outside in our curriculum in a meaningful way? And I think that our school campuses are really coming alive. And I think the reason that we all want to celebrate that is because it was our, our school campuses that were so silent and so desolate for so long. And so to have teachers, you know, what is happening here? I guess I'm going to just keep rolling through. And so, you know, now that the cooler temperatures are with us, you know, it's not quite as bustling, but I can tell you that students are still getting outside every day. And I think that once we get to true winter, we will have some new opportunities to explore with snow and just the changing of the seasons. I think that, you know, I may want to come back and ask some school committee members to rethink the policy around open fires. Keep us a little bit warmer outside. But again, I think that it's just exciting to see something's different for us at Centerville. Onto building community. I think that you should know that Centerville, we love a good event. And so, you know, once we got students settled safely into the building, we were faced with a thought of, oh my God, how are we going to keep our school culture so strong? That is something that's really important to us. And, you know, we have an amazing team of teachers who enjoy a good challenge. And so, you know, they've got to thinking about different events that we could do as a community, but safely. And so in October, we held a scavenger hunt, a scavenger hike, I should say, through our woods behind our school. And each class went on a mission to find 50 interesting things in the woods. And those are some pictures of a few of them. That was a great event to just sort of celebrate being in school. I think when we came back, we were struck with, oh my gosh, we have kids sitting in chairs for so long. We've got to be thinking of ways to get them out and keep them moving. And so early in the fall, this became a great event for our school that we could all share. I do want to back up to our recess yard. And I want to share this slide with you because this was a slide that I had shown families before we came back of how we were dividing our recess yard so that classroom cohorts would not be intermingling with one another when they were outside at play. And I thought, and I said to families, you know, if I had presented this to you, you would have thought I was crazy to just keep everybody so separate. But the way that children are playing together now every day, there truly has no child left out. So we are seeing kids play together who have never played together. You know, everyone feels so connected in a way. And then I think that it's a kind of a, it's ironic because we're so separate. But it's been something that has been consistent all along. So I think that kids are getting a really great experience and something that we did not anticipate going into this. I think we were so worried about keeping everybody apart, but there's like a new sort of integration that's happening for all kids feeling, you know, safe and welcome at school. Just gonna, oops, skip this. Then on to November, we hosted another sort of outdoor event for our school, a turkey hunt. We hit some interesting turkeys all over the schoolyard and some clues. And we're lucky enough that we have, you know, I see Lorgan, you're here, your staff from the Y are happily, you know, to dress up as a human bird and join us. Endeavors just to kind of keep it light and fun. And these are things I think that keep us going as a staff and positive because it can be, it can be challenging to kind of maintain the structures in the distance of the day. So we need to kind of break up the monotony sometimes. So we need to kind of break up the monotony sometimes. Another thing that I would call this a an opportunity that was created because of our schedule this year. And it was really, you know, this time that we have is really creating a space for us to reflect on our own cultural competence as a staff. And this was something that was started early in the spring at the closure, right? When we had the protests and the marches in our community. And we had many staff members who were deeply impacted by this in different ways and thinking, how does this change who I am as an educator? And so shortly after that, really in the summer, came a two-day conference. It was the Be About It Conference to unpack anti-racist instruction. And it really brought some different perspectives and voices to teaching that that changed a lot of, so we had a significant amount of our staff members join this two-day conference. And it really just sparked so many conversations that were brought into this new year with us. And and so we were thinking about how do we bring this sort of new mindset and these new ideas into the larger, into our larger staff? And we really thought, you know, we need to start with who we are. And so we rolled into this year, creating a comfortable space for all of our staff to sort of kind of bring their own identities in the work that we do with kids every day and create a safe space for sharing and 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 sharing things that are uncomfortable at times. And so that has continued to evolve into, you know, teachers, if you know, teachers, like, they can only take so much talking before then they want to start acting. And they want to start making changes to what they do with kids. And and teachers were starting to think of, how might I present my curriculum differently? How might I add some supplemental resources into what I've been doing? And refresh that, given some of this new thinking that I'm doing. And so I applaud the efforts of our teachers who are sort of bravely and courageously taking on new content and adding in new topics for their students and engaging them in new ways and updating classroom libraries and just thinking so differently. And not only are they thinking differently, the kids are really responding very well. And this is work that's just kind of starting for us. And I feel like we're on a great path to seeing some of the just additions to our our curriculum. It's kind of, again, it's one of those times that's really exciting. And so this is a picture from our fourth grade, of our fourth grade team who's decided to adopt sort of a book study as their professional practice goal this year. And I'll say, you know, this is kind of the first time since I've been at Centerville that we've had teachers sort of explore a topic in a new way together, such as this. And so they're really doing deep professional work, given this time of challenge. So again, you've got the challenge of what we do every day with kids, but you've got sort of this time and this opportunity to think more deeply about making significant differences that that matter now, but then are going to make us better in the long run. And then finally, something, you know, I feel like we're fairly solid in what we have going on from eight to 12. And knowing that part of the day exists at home, that we want kids to be engaged in doing, you know, practicing and learning. We really are trying to rethink homework and flex that muscle. I think that we were stunned by how many students we lost when we when we went to closure. You know, how the struggle it was to keep students engaged was very real and it was very real for everyone. And I think that we came into this year thinking, gosh, if that ever happens again, we want kids with us. We want to, we want them to do to develop those skills of self-management so that they they knew how to, you know, keep going wherever they were. So we have focused on this, you know, we're using the the homework piece as a exercise in developing the self-management of our kids while also hoping to support some more academic growth. We are using our, you know, say specifically, we use our our ST math data because ST math is a program which you've you've heard about before at these meetings. It's it's something that is creating a win, you know, we don't spend a lot of time on it at school. So we say, this is a thing that you can do at home. It's something that kids can do independently. They do not need parent support. And so we look at this data very closely to see who's not doing it. And then we go kid by kid, family by family. And we are still, you know, we still have uncovered some connectivity issues. We are also just confronting some some different communication strategies. And that work has really paid off for us in seeing the a higher rate of engagement for students at home. So we're starting with that and hoping that we can flex that muscle and build something that's kind of easy and easy sell for us, that we can move that on to some other things later on. And I will just stop right there and thank you for your support. And I will stop my screen and.
Thank you, Julie. It's such a such a pleasure and a treat to get out and to be able to walk through Centerville and to see and feel the positive energy through the school. It's just when you think you go in there and you just see the learning and the teamwork that's happening, you kind of forget about all the craziness happening in the outside world and you feel like we're kind of normal. And it the everybody's working so hard and it's just amazing. And I thank you for your leadership and your teachers for their amazing work. I would ask if anybody has questions for Julie that you ask them now. Tonight is her son's seventh birthday, and I want to be able to let her leave and go back to her family.
Yeah, my son snuck up and gave me a note since time for cake.
So you tell him, he said, mom has to go back for cake.
Just thank you so much. Really, that was wonderful. I want the links to those videos, though. I heard a little gobble gobble and I want to see more.
Oh, and and I have to tell you, Centerville does some amazing videos. Julie runs them, but then her teachers jump in as well. And that really last spring through the the early days of the pandemic, we all kind of lived for the Centerville videos to give us a little light at the end of the week.
Good time for sure. Thank you. And again, thank you for the the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Go have cake.
Bye, everybody.
All right, and I think I am back sharing. Before we move to our student representatives and we give them a chance to hear from our students as to what's going on in their schools or any issues that they'd like to bring to us. I do want to, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the mayor for setting up the testing that happened today at the middle school for our school employees. And we're we're very grateful for that and we had a really good turnout. There are two more days that that can happen. And we encourage all of our employees to avail themselves of that opportunity. So thank you to the mayor and the city. It's now my pleasure to have, turn it over and allow our student members to share any thoughts that they have or to let us know some some things that are happening in their schools. And why don't we start with Virginia? Because we did hear from her in the chorus too. So maybe she wants to add something in about the musical presentations.
Hi, yeah, I love watching all the recordings and stuff. So that's cool that we got to see that tonight. And also, I was really excited for Spirit Week that we do before Thanksgiving. Obviously, we couldn't have a big pep rally. But we were able to have the class decorated hallways, which is always so much fun to just walk down. They're all decorated with like the seasons. And Powder Puff Football, which I participated in, which that was just really fun. As I'm a gymnast, so that's very individual. So it's fun to be part of like a team sport. So, yeah, and I applied to college finally, so all of my hard work.
Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Can't wait to hear in the spring where you're where you're going.
Yeah.
I think we have a couple of our middle school students with us as well. Deja, would you like to share anything with us about the middle school? And if not, I think we have Ava with us as well. Ava, would you like to share anything about the middle school?
Sure, so as a student, I would say overall that we are getting into the rhythm of the RLA schedule. And I think it's turning into a routine that the students are following well. Sometimes there are Google Meet issues, but the teachers and students are very quick to fix it. If it's okay with you all, I would like to just quickly introduce something that I thought of. I was thinking of we could do something along the lines of an RLA student of the month. Mr. Trombley and I have been coordinating back and forth about the layout and the basics of the idea. But I feel that it will help students be more attentive and outgoing in the classroom and help engage in a remote environment. We fully, we haven't fully wrapped our heads around the idea yet. But we intend to work on it and hopefully institute it for the second trimester. So this is just an introduction, but there's definitely more work to be done. As well as the teachers are being very flexible and I've really gone to grips with the technology.
That's great. We can't wait to hear more about your RLA Student of the Month and working with Mr. Trombley. So maybe at the next meeting, you can have a more of an update for us. Okay, anything else that our students would like to share? Well, thank you very much. And now it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Andre Morgan, who will move us into our work section of the night, which is our focus topics. And our first one is around Title IX update and some work that we will need to change and focus on as the year goes through. So, Dr. Morgan, I will turn this over to you.
Thank you much, Dr. Flaherty, and good evening, everyone. Dr. Flaherty, I'm going to lean on you a little bit and ask you to help me by advancing my slides for this portion, please. And if you go back to the prior slide, I'm going to stay on that for about 30 seconds. And then I'll key up when we're ready to advance to the next slide. I thought I'd start with an overview of the Title IX statute. Under Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972, no person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. That's the actual statute. And essentially, essentially, Title X, Title IX prohibits sex discrimination in education institutions that receive federal funding, which is the vast majority of schools across the US. Let's go on to our next slide. This slide and the next one highlights the new elements of the Title IX statute. The rule announced on May the 6th of this year extends many new protections against sexual harassment, and it strongly safeguards the rights of all students, including the right to due process. In the prior version of Title IX, students were denied basic due process protections. And this led to the court's frequently overturning school decisions, subjecting survivors to further trauma. So here are the key provisions of the new Title IX regulations. I'm going to read through them. Dr. Flaherty, if we can, can we blow this up a little bit?
I do not believe I can do that.
All right, if you will bear with me, I will pull up my version so that I can share with the committee the new provisions. In these new provisions, I've only included the provisions on the slides that impact pre-K through 12 education. I've not included the provisions that are explicitly designated for US colleges and universities, for which there are several. So if you will bear with me for just a minute, I want to pull up the slides.
Andre, do you want me to read them? Because they're quite large on my screen. Do you want me to read them for you?
Yeah, would you mind?
Okay, define sexual harassment to include sexual assault, dating violence, domestic violence, and stalking as unlawful discrimination on the basis of sex. Provides a consistent legally sound framework on which survivors, the accused, and the schools can follow. Requires schools to offer clear, accessible options for any person to report sexual harassment. Empowers survivors to make decisions about how a school responds to incidents of sexual harassment. Requires schools to offer survivors supportive measures such as class reassignment or no-contact orders. Protects K-12 students by requiring elementary and secondary schools to respond promptly when any employee has notice of sexual harassment.
And Dr. Flaherty, will you then go to the next slide? And it has the remaining provisions that impact pre-K through 12 schools.
Shields survivors from having to come face to face with the accused during a hearing and from answering questions posed personally by the accused. Requires schools to select one of two standards of evidence, the preponderance of the evidence standard or the clear and convincing evidence standard, and to apply the selected standard evenly to proceedings for all students and employees. Provides rape shields protections and ensures survivors are not required to divulge any medical, psychological, or similarly privileged records. Requires schools to offer an equal right to appeal for both parties to a Title IX proceeding and gives schools flexibility to use technology to conduct Title IX investigations and hearings.
Thanks, Dr. Flaherty. As a point of reference on that third point, for those who may not be familiar, a rape shield law is a law that limits the ability to introduce evidence across-examining rape complainants about their past sexual behavior. As a update to the new regulations, I've been in touch and have spoken with the district's attorney about the implications of the new regulations to our current Title IX policy. What it does mean based on these new regulations is that we do need to adjust our policy. And our attorney is taking the lead in drafting the revised policy. She's further agreed to have a discussion with this committee if there are further details the committee will like to review. I anticipate that by our next SISL meeting in January, I'll be able to share the district's adjusted Title IX policy for your review and for Q and A. I'm happy to field any follow-up questions that you might have.
If anybody has questions or would like anything included in that January meeting on this topic, you can always email either Dr. Andre, Dr. Morgan, or myself, and we will put that into the the next meeting. Thank you, Dr. Morgan.
Back to you.
Okay, so one of the things that we wanted to give to you tonight is a an update on what attendance has been looking like. As you know, we've had some classrooms that have gone out, but we've been able to teach remotely. We've had the COVID, so we have had people that have been ill. We are working on three different models at the elementary, the middle school, and the high school. And so across the state and across the country, attendance has been a major issue and concern for looking at equity of student learning and concern around increased learning gaps. I'm very pleased to let you know, we've we have looked at attendance all along. I asked Maddie August to run a monthly check. And so here we have the average daily attendance for each of our schools and from the day we open on September 16th through November 30th, which was Monday. And the the good news is, is that all of our schools are at 90% or higher, which is outstanding news. And you can see the the high school is at 90.5, middle school at 92.84, Ayers at 94.7, Centerville 92, Cove 92.6, Hannah 92.7, and North Beverly is at 95. That's that's almost would be, I bet in a normal year, they would be up around the 98% range, 97, 98. But they're pretty much, our elementary schools and even our middle and high school have really strong attendance, which is going to bode well at the by the end of the year for closing learning gaps, for making sure that students are learning on grade level and are prepared to move forward to their next level of education. We do have some concerns, which I will address on the next slide. But before I move on, Mrs. Abell, do you have a question?
I do, if I might. I think I've heard the RLA referred to as its own new school. And I do wonder if we're tracking attendance for RLA. I appreciate Ms. Max's feedback about engagement. So I do want to make sure we keep an eye on that. But then I also had another question, if this attendance counts the remote days in in the report out. So for instance, Um, so for instance, the high school has remote days twice in a three-day cycle. And so is this number reflecting the remote participation as well as the in-person participation?
It does. This is the daily, daily attendance, whether it's in remote or um, in person. The, as far as our daily uh, attendance, the um, the remote Learning Academy grade levels are um, in the school, so the school that they're assigned with, they are part of that percentage. But on top of that, we, I did get a list, which I only got last night. I've only scanned through it. But we do have a list of all of the um, remote learning students. They don't get their own percentage because they're not assigned um, as one building. Right now, they're in these numbers. But we have also looked, and I can tell you that the attendance on the Remote Learning Academy is extraordinarily high. Um, we do have um, in each of the grade levels, you may find a few students that are on the um, the lower end or in a concerned end, which they will fall into the concerns I have on the next slide. But um, overall, the attendance runs around the same amount of percentage as you'd see here. I bet you that if we sat and calculated it individually, that they would be above ninety percent as well.
One follow-on question, um, and maybe it's on your next slide. I wonder about the in-person days, if transportation for our older middle school and our high school students has been a reason that attendance isn't as high in, in those two schools, but.
That, that's something that we are interested in looking at, and it is on the next slide.
Okay, thank you.
So as, as the news is very positive on many fronts, we do notice and we are looking at the percentage of the overall uh, um, student population that also has um, high numbers of chronic absenteeism. And so we run uh, numbers that look at students that, um, and we're, we are labeling that. And it, it's just our number that we chose because it's more than two weeks, which we think is a significant amount of time for a student to be out of school. And so we're looking and tracking um, students that have greater than ten days of um, absence. I can tell you that as we look through, there are some that are right at that ten day, and there are some that have not been in school very much at all. They may have only been in a few days um, since September. And that's something that we're working with, um, and the principals have been working on. There've been students that have been, I know at the middle school, that have been invited back to come to in-person instruction or to come in for days when they wouldn't normally be in school, um, and join our high needs students. Um, there's been some pushback from parents that don't want their students to be in school on days that they don't need to be there. Or if they're in the Remote Learning Academy, um, they want to keep them remote. Um, so that is something that we're still working on. I just got um, all of the final reports on this yesterday, and so I'm um, compiling the data and sending it out to principals uh, tomorrow. And over the next week, we're going to be meeting with them to talk about some of our um, high needs kids that we really need to follow up on and find out um, what they've already been doing, which is a lot. I know all of the schools have been working on um, different ways of trying to, to get to our students that are um, lagging behind. There are concerns as you look through that uh, there is a much higher percentage of our students that would also fall into our high need subgroups that are in those chronic absentee um, concerns as well. And so we are looking um, at the impact on grade level spans. So looking at elementary, uh, looking at middle school, and then looking at high school. We do find that the, the older the students get, the bigger the percentage of chronic absenteeism that is happening. Um, and so one of the things that we want to look about that is transportation an issue. Um, what are the areas um, that can be keeping students um, from coming on the in-person days if that's where um, the lag happens? So that's the next level that we're looking at is um, trying to figure out, because right now, when you look at the attendance report, it tells you um, when they're, you know, present or not present. It doesn't, it's not as easy to determine if it's an in-person or a remote day. So that's the next level of um, research that we're looking at. And we also are looking at, now that we have finished the first quarter at the high school and the trimester will be ending um, very shortly at the middle and the elementary schools. Uh, we want to look at the correlation between attendance and grades. Um, and then we also know that we have um, let parents um, decide at the trimester, which is coming up. If there's a change and they want to come from remote learning back into in-person, uh, we've, we work on a weekly basis. We're going to be finishing it up tomorrow, looking at where we may have seats. Um, if it can't be at your homeschool, we may have a seat that's open at the elementary level at a different school. If you're looking to come back to in-person. And we have fewer people that are trying to go from in-person to remote, but we will also look at that. But we, we have to make decisions around available seats. We don't want to overpack um, any remote learning classes that would go above what a normal class would normally be. And we also need to make sure that safety and being able to keep our eighteen students in proper distancing um, is uh, paramount to, to the safety. And then if we don't have seats, what we can do creatively to um, to alleviate those areas where we don't have seats in your, your homeschool at this current time. And the principals have been working on that. And I believe right now, with the exception of kindergarten, which is very tight, um, and the fourth grade, we do have um, seats that, that are available for the most part in everybody's homeschool. And uh, principal's been working to invite students back in and working through the, the list that we have of parents that have requested to come back in. Any questions on the attendance? And we will continue to update you in this area um, as the year moves forward. Mrs. Abell?
I, I think I heard you say this, and I just wanted to make sure I heard it correctly. You seem to indicate that there are more people interested in returning to in-person rather than transition out to the RLA.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, it's my pleasure to invite uh, Ms. Bethany Spolansky to talk to you about our inclusive practices.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for having me here tonight and um, inviting me to talk about this topic, which is very near and dear to my heart. So I want to start by just um, giving a little context um, for why we're talking about inclusion and why it's so important. So we know that um, approximately eighteen percent of students in Massachusetts are eligible for special education services. And of those students, approximately sixty percent um, are provided services within a full inclusion placement, meaning that they're within their general education classroom for the majority of the day. And so that means that all teachers, regardless of their license area, will be working with students with diverse needs. Uh, we also know that in Massachusetts, students with learning or communication disabilities who are educated within the general education setting are nearly five times as likely to graduate high school in four years or fewer than our similar students in substantially separate placements. And so in other words, we know that the outcomes are better when our instruction allows students with diverse needs to access the general education classroom. Um, so I just mentioned um, full inclusion placement, and so I want to take a moment just to talk about that and what that means. Um, a placement is not a place and it's not a program. Um, placement refers to the amount of time that a student spends within the general education setting. So if you look here at the areas that are in green, these show the different placement options that are available within the public school setting. And a full inclusion placement is defined um, as spending time in the general education classroom for at least eighty percent of the day. So it doesn't mean that students aren't removed at all, but it means that the general education classroom is the primary setting for the instruction. Um, partial inclusion placement is when students are in the general education classroom for forty to seventy-nine percent of the day. And a substantially separate placement is when students are in the general education classroom for less than forty percent of the day. And you can see that the full inclusion placement is the least restrictive option that's available in the public school setting. So one of the driving factors behind determining placement for students is what's known as the least restrictive environment. And so the concept here is that students should be educated within the general education setting unless they can't be. So that should be assumed to be the least restrictive setting for students. Um, and if the, the severity of the needs is such that they need to be removed, we should only be removing them when we can't provide services within the general education setting. And so a few years back, we took a really serious look at this in Beverly and um, we looked at how we were providing our services and historically, you know, in Beverly, as in most districts, this is not unique to Beverly. Um, we did have a lot of our services being provided in a, a pullout model, um, which is overly restrictive because, you know, students are being removed from the general education setting in order to receive services. Um, the way that our services were provided was primarily that um, special education teachers were providing services outside of the classroom, and we would have paraprofessional support in the classroom. And so we moved to more inclusive models of service delivery so that special education teachers could provide support within the classroom. And we still obviously have paraprofessionals providing support as well, but we want to move that specialized instruction into the classroom um, so that we can provide services in a less restrictive manner. We do continue to have sub-separate and partial inclusion programs because that is appropriate for some students with um, a higher level of need. But our focus is on providing uh, services in the least restrictive environment that we can. So what is co-teaching? Co-teaching is when two teachers of equal status and licensure are delivering content and fully participating in the instructional process. And so in other words, we have both teachers working with all students. So it's not special education teacher working with the special education students in the classroom and the gen ed teacher working with the gen ed students. It's both teachers working with all students. And each teacher in this kind of um, model of service provision brings their own different set of skills to the table. And so general education teachers are really our experts in curriculum. And our special education teachers are, are really our experts in modification of curriculum. Um, they are experts in executive functioning skills and behavior management and um, different specialized methodologies. And so they each come to the table with a different set of skills to meet the needs of the students within the classroom. Uh, one thing that's important to note in the co-teaching model is that um, classrooms should not really be comprised of more than a third of students with disabilities. And this is just important because sometimes I think people envision that we're, that we're grouping together all students with disabilities um, together in one class. And we want to make sure that we're keeping heterogeneous groupings. And so this is kind of the general rule of thumb for how we make up class um, class groupings within our co-teaching model. Um, I think when people think about co-teaching, they often think about team teaching. They think about two teachers standing at the front of the classroom, um, addressing a group of students. But really, there are many different ways to provide co-teaching. There are many different models of co-teaching. So in a different, in addition to the team teaching, um, you could have one teacher teaching while another teacher observes and gathers data about student needs. Uh, you could have one teacher teaching while another teacher is walking around providing assistance to students. You can have parallel teaching where you have two teachers um, simultaneously presenting the same content to two different groups. You can have station teaching where we divide the group and the content, and each teacher teaches a group. Um, and then the groups rotate through each of the stations. And then you can have alternative teaching where one teacher teaches a larger group while another teacher teaches a smaller group that requires specialized instruction. I think we have to go back one dot. There we go. Thank you. Um, so in terms of the benefits of co-teaching, um, co-teaching really improves the instruction for all students of all abilities. And this is really important. It's not just for special education students. It's really a benefit to all students. When we think about a classroom, we tend to think about a classroom being comprised primarily of quote-unquote, average students. Um, but the truth is, is that um, you know, one student may be average and may have really exceptional strengths in language skills and maybe has weaker visual processing skills. And we might have another student who's also average, but may learn primarily through visual means and through kinesthetic learning and may have much weaker language skills. And so when you look at a group of quote-unquote, average students, um, they all have their own unique profiles, their own unique strengths, their own unique challenges. And so um, there's really not such a thing as an average learner. And so when we design our instruction more individually to meet the needs of all learners, then all students benefit from that. Uh, we think a lot about designing to the edges. So um, you know, in special education, we look at what kind of remediation students require in order to build specific skills. Uh, but there are plenty of general education students who also require remediation for all types of reasons. Um, and so when we are in a co-teaching model, any student who requires remediation can receive that um, either by the special education teacher or by the general education teacher, depending on the model being utilized. Um, as we just talked about on the previous slide, using an alternative kind of teaching model, you could have um, students requiring remediation working with a special education teacher while the general education teacher is providing general instruction. Um, or you could have the general education teacher providing um, extension activities to those who are working above grade level standards. And you could have the special education teacher providing the general instruction. Um, I think it's also important to remember too, that even within um, students who are receiving remediation, there are also students who, who may need remediation in one area, but who would also require um, extension activities in other areas. And so for example, you may have a special education student who is struggling with uh, reading skills, but may have really exceptional strengths in math, and so may require remediation in one area and extensions, extension in another area. And so um, again, this kind of instruction allows for flexibility in how we meet those strengths and how we meet those needs. It reduces stigma and increases respect for students with disabilities. It creates a heterogeneous class community. It reduces instruction fragmentation for students with, that students with disabilities experience when they're removed from the classroom. So if you think back to our previous model where we were removing students and pulling them into small groups to receive instruction, they were missing what was going on in the general education setting during that time. And then we're coming back often in the middle of an activity that was um, happening. And so it was a much more fragmented way of providing services. It also ensures that the instructors know the content and the general education curriculum. Again, as I said before, each of the teachers in a co-teaching model has their own area of strength and uh, their own set of skills that they bring to the table. And when you think about, you know, I'll use math as an example. Once you get, you know, to middle school math, you really need to have expertise in order to teach students math. And so if you're a special education teacher, you may not have that same content knowledge uh, to be able to provide math instruction. So if you're working alongside of a general education teacher who has that knowledge, um, it's um, a much more effective way to provide instruction. And it also fosters a sense of support among teachers. Um, you know, as a general education teacher with a very diverse classroom, it can be challenging to meet the needs of all students. And so having a, a special education teacher help to provide modification to instruction provides a, a level of support. Uh, we've had huge success over the past couple of years with implementing our co-teaching model. We now have co-teaching happening in all seven of our schools. Uh, it's in different places in different schools, depending on the needs of the students and just depending on how far along um, each school is within the process. But it's happening um, within each school. We have a higher number of students in full inclusion placements than we did previously. Um, we have ongoing training in a partnership with Lisa Decker, who is one of the national experts in co-teaching. And we have worked with her on what, staff trainings as well as ongoing consultation. She works with us approximately every other month to provide consultation to teams of teachers um, who want to talk through specific issues or learn new strategies to um, improve their co-teaching methodologies. We also have fewer students who are taking um, the MCAS alt. And so just a, a quick word about that, um, I think everyone's familiar with MCAS and the fact that MCAS is a graduation requirement. Uh, we do have some students who are not able to take MCAS even with accommodations um, provided. And so in those circumstances, there is an alternative assessment that's a portfolio assessment where we gather work samples over a period of time, and we use the work samples to show progress, um, individual progress. Um, but if you are on an MCAS alt, that does impact your ability to graduate high school because you have to, um, you know, you have to pass the MCAS with, with or without accommodations in order to graduate from high school. And so um, as we have moved, you know, moved students into more inclusive placements, we've been able to have more um, students who didn't necessarily have that same access to the general education curriculum, who now do have access. And so the result of that is that we've had more students who are able to access the MCAS um, test, which then allows for, for them to meet graduation requirements. And we are uh, required to have, we are um, based on, on a federal, um, the, the uh, Every Student Succeeds Act, we're supposed to be within uh, one percent of students taking MCAS, um, who are taking the MCAS alt. And so um, I'm happy to report that based on our predictions for this year, we've gone through and looked at the number of students who are predicted to take MCAS alt, and we are um, predicted to be under that one percent um, margin for students who will be taking MCAS alt. So that's a huge success, um, that is um, in part due to our co-teaching model. So here's a picture of um, some co-teachers at work. We have on the left a general education teacher and on the right a special education teacher and their team teaching at the middle school with a group of um, diverse learners and um, so you can see how co-teaching looks in action. Um, in terms of challenges, um, one of the challenges with the co-teaching model is just balancing resources. Um, when you think about. When you think about at the elementary level, we have five grade levels at all of our buildings. We have three special education teachers. And so it can be a little bit challenging at times just to balance the resources of determining, you know, which grade levels have the greatest level of need, how much time teachers need to spend at various levels, meeting the needs of students. And so that can be a little bit tricky to navigate. Training, while training has been an area of success and that we've had ongoing training with Lisa Decker, it's also a challenge because implementing co-teaching really is like a three to five year kind of a plan in order to get everybody fully up and going with the model. And, you know, within that period of time, we do have changes that happen with staffing. You know, when you think about co-teaching, it's almost a little bit like a marriage. You've got two teachers working together really closely. And then when those partnerships change, for whatever reason, there's often additional training that needs to come when new partnerships come together. So ongoing training, while on one hand is a success, also has been challenging at times. And then another challenge has been planning time. So in order for teachers to really be able to come together and teach together, you know, both having a hand in designing the lesson and then gathering data and then progress monitoring, there's a lot of planning that goes into that. And so that's always a struggle since time is hard to come by sometimes. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I see Ms. Sudak's hand was up.
I was just curious. So I'm sure the hybrid models at any level are difficult, or at least at the beginning of the year for a lot of kids. Have you been able to keep this model successful and not look at any regression even with the hybrid model going on in the district?
Yeah, that's a great question. So it's interesting, the pandemic has actually kind of posed a great opportunity for us to really expand the co-teaching model. There's been a big focus on having us not mix cohorts of students. And so when you think about the previous model, we oftentimes were, you know, pulling two students from this class and three students from this class and one student from over here and putting them together outside of the general education classroom. And because of the pandemic and because of the focus on not mixing cohorts, it's really been a great opportunity for us to figure out how to really expand our model to provide even more inclusive opportunities. So I would say that if anything, it's moved us in a positive direction. We've had the opportunity because of the issues around the pandemic to provide services in a way that is sometimes different than what's actually outlined in the IEP. And so that's given us some flexibility to be more inclusive with our services. And so if anything, I think we've gone in a positive direction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think I see Ms. Goodno McGuire's hand.
I would just add, for the past two years, my daughter has been in one of these co-taught classes for first and second grade, and it's been very successful for her. I think academically, but also socially that she's got multiple adults to go to that she doesn't have to worry about everyone looking at her if something goes on. One teacher can handle the rest of the class. One teacher can help her. And she's so happy at school. And I think the co-teaching is very helpful. I really appreciate that.
That's great. Thanks for that feedback.
Okay, thank you, Smolinski, for a great presentation and overview.
Thank you.
So we're going to move into our last section of the agenda. We've seen some of the creativity that's happened in school. We've seen the learning that's happening and heard about it at the elementary and the about our inclusion and co-taught and how it's helping to meet the learning needs of all of our students. And the other major way that we focus on making sure that students' individual learning needs are met is through the use of data. And I think that this is something that Beverly should be very proud of. And the skill of all of our teachers in using data to inform their instruction and grouping is very, very high in this town. So this is something that we should be happy for. This is going to be just kind of the big overview so you can kind of see how we're using data in assessment to make our decisions. This could be a whole night in and of itself. And if you want to have us revisit in more deeper detail moving forward, we can do that. But this tonight, I thank the principals and the coaches at Centerville and at North Beverly for helping to frame the presentation this evening. And they approach it a little bit differently, but you'll see they use the same kinds of data in order to make those decisions. And so one of the things that is important to know is that assessment and using data is something that is part of our weekly discussions at grade levels and in schools and when we meet with principals. And it's used in multiple ways and multiple people are really good at it. I think in the beginning, you only had a principal or maybe a coach that was telling teachers about what their data looked like. But really through the great work between their principals and coaches and over the last several years, making it a priority, every teacher can now use data and analyze data to help drive their instruction and to plan their instruction. So what does that look like when we review and analyze data? We have common assessments and you'll see this looks pretty, maybe a little overwhelming. But when a teacher looks at this, this is our DIBELS. It looks at reading fluency. And what you can see is there's a lot of different tests that have funny names to them. But what you can see is that this is done for every student in a class. And this was a third grade class at the beginning of the school year. And as you scroll through each of those, you can see on the far left, those would be the students' names. Those have been blocked out. But for every student in the classroom, the teacher can easily get a visual of where they are and where their strengths and weaknesses are. So where you see reds, that's something that needs an intervention and it's significantly below grade level. If you see a yellow, that's somebody that needs a little bit of targeted or strategic help in an area. And where you see a green, that's on grade level and a blue is above grade level. We use common assessments and as you know, it's a major expenditure in the budget each year, but we have a warehouse basically that we call Linkit. And it's where we can house all of our data. It allows us also to create common assessments across grade levels and so that it allows us to compare data between schools and within a school. And from grades, this just says three and four because it's at the elementary level, but these is common assessments and benchmark testing is actually available in Linkit for grades three through eight. The middle school does something similar this year. They've already done their fall benchmarking in Linkit and they're also using a math program called an Edmentum that will give them some benchmark testing that will be similar to what you'll see here or hear about from the elementary people when they talk about ZARN, which is our new math program. But as you can see here, when we have our assessment for reading, it will give and populate data for a teacher again, making it very visually noticeable to them and easy to analyze. And will actually give you the percentage that they received on the question. It lets you know if that student is approaching expectations, not meeting expectations, which would be a red, which you don't see here. A yellow is, and you'll see the words bubble, that means that they're on the cusp, that they could be one point above or one point below, but it could go in either way. So they just need some of that strategic help. And then when you see a green, that means that they're meeting expectations. One of the powerful things about the data, common assessments in Linkit, is that this is also a predictor for how they will do on MCAS. So when you see on the left, the assessment for reading and it says approaching bubble and meeting expectations, that is a correlation to how they'll be predicted to do in that area on the MCAS test. So a bubble again means it's right on the cusp in between and the green shows that they would meet that expectation. Here you can see that this is something that we work out with the coaches at the beginning of the year. And we have a similar one of these for literacy and we also have one for math. We're meeting on Friday to hone dates and make sure that we have everything kind of in tune across all of the schools. And this is an assessment calendar. So this would be when the benchmark testing or the common assessments would be given. And that common assessment is given across a grade level between all five schools. And this is really helping to make sure that we are a school system and not just a system of five individual elementary schools. It allows us to look at data across a grade span. We are now, we are also doing a lot of work this year. Each principal has taken the leadership of one grade level and they meet with those grade level teachers across all of the schools. So we're doing a lot of planning and a lot of analyzing of data, especially with the importance of looking at learning loss from the spring and from what is happening this year with kind of the reduced day. But in a minute, you're going to see some of the outcomes. And I think you'll find that from an academic standpoint, the schedule that the school committee has supported for the elementary level has been really, really key and an essential component in making sure that we have closed a lot of the learning gaps that were noticeable at the beginning of the school year. Because the focus for those four hours that the kids are in school are on academics and it's been very beneficial. And so once you get all of that data, what does a teacher do? Well, then they need to, it's good to look at the data, but then how do they then take that and use it in their classrooms? And so what they're able to do is they can make this four square, you can see that they can look at the two pieces of data you saw earlier, which was the DIBELS and the Linkit assessments. And they create groupings of their students. So in the upper left-hand corner, you'll see that these are our, these are our high flyer kids. These are our kids that are above grade level, on or above grade level on DIBELS reading benchmark. It's, they're also on or above level in the Linkit benchmark common assessments. So that would be a student that would need, that grouping of students would need extension work. We want to make sure that we're pushing them and challenging them to reach even higher. In our upper right-hand corner, you'll see that they can put in students in this group. These would be students that were on or above grade level for the DIBELS benchmark test, but they were below the 50th percent in comprehension, which meant that they were below level and on the benchmark assessment. In this lower left-hand corner, it would be the opposite. So they were below level in the DIBELS score, but they were on or above the 50th percent on the benchmark assessments. And you can see that this was a small group of students and each of the groups will have a small number of very targeted interventions. And then our last group are our students that are below grade level on all of the common assessments that were given. So now the teacher can then turn around and use that to plan their instruction. And this was the approach that was taken with Centerville. And so you can see that the teacher will then create an instructional plan for, and this happens to be in ELA, but we could also do, and they will also do something similar for writing and then also for math. And you can see that first group that we saw that had a large group of our students that were on grade level or on or above, they plan, they might use reciprocal teaching. This would be a lot of time where they may do some partner reading so students can go do some independent work and read with each other. They may also have a flipgrid or a CSAR lesson that they can work on independently while the teacher is working with one of the other groups. But really the focus is on extension and enrichment and pushing students. They do not need to have any progress monitoring. So they would just take the normal benchmark assessments as the year progresses. Then you had the group that was, had three students in it and they were meeting their DIBELS score, but not meeting their benchmark assessment. So they may have some strategic or independent work within the classroom that would help them to work on the areas where they were struggling. This could easily be done by a paraprofessional in the classroom. And the teacher would then put those strategies into effect for a month and then they would go back and they would retest. That's what we mean when we say progress monitoring. So we're not letting a student just hang out there until we do the benchmark testing in the, you know, the fall, the winter and the spring. But there is ongoing assessments throughout the year to see if we're closing those gaps or if other strategies need to be implemented. Then you have this one kiddo right here that needed some more targeted support. They may be being pulled into a group within the classroom with a coach. Or if it's a co-teacher, this may be a situation where one of the teachers is working independently with this one student while the other teacher is addressing one of the other groups within the classroom. Again, the classroom teacher would direct this instruction and they would be on a monthly progress monitoring to make sure that the gap was being closed. And then these are our students that need some more very specific support. They may be receiving a reading teacher or they may have a special education teacher that is doing some modifications or very targeted strategic work within the classroom. And then that would also be done twice per month. So now we've increased the progress monitoring that is happening so that it's every two weeks and not letting anything go too long without making sure that we're not readjusting for how the student is doing. So how the teachers do this is twice a month, they have these meetings with coaches and principals when they meet as a grade level. And as we had said, one of the things that we're doing this year is that we're also doing grade level district meetings. And so that's when all of the teachers can look at and plan together to make sure that they're coming up with the correct interventions, coming up with creative extensions, project based learning and talking about ways that a modification may have worked for one teacher and they get to share with the other teachers something that worked. So then we moved on and I wanted to share, and this will look somewhat similar, I'm not going to explain all of the data in as much detail, but this is at North Beverly. They have been doing teachers looking independently at their data for several years and they've actually moved to a different level where now the teachers are the ones that are looking at their data and presenting it to the coach and the principal. I get to sit in on a few of these. And I think one of the things that I wanted to highlight in this as we move forward is that teachers are still using data, but when they are presenting it, it really is a story. They need to tell the story of their class and they're telling the story of the individual students within that class. And they put a face to the kids. A lot of times they'll actually have pictures of the kids in their PowerPoint slides or they'll have student work that the individual student did. So it's not just looking at the data and looking at names, but it's looking at real kids. It's looking and making it the human connection that is pretty powerful. And it really shows how in-depth the teachers really know their data and know their individual learning strengths and struggles for their students. So this goes through and shows you again, they're using the same types of data for literacy and for math to look at making their decisions. You see the same color code here. One of the things that is here on the lower left that I wanted to point out to you is how they make their stories about their individual students. And I wanted to, I lost, hold on. This, as you can see up at the top, it talks about their actual scores and where they want to do. But then they personalize it. And so they say, what are the strengths and the areas of growth? And it's not just data. It's about talking to kids and knowing them. And the teacher writes, and this comes right from an actual data meeting that happened just a couple of weeks ago, that this student likes math. They're especially good at multiplication and division. They like creative activities and they're a risk taker. And areas of growth, in his own words, writing is harder and more challenging than I'm used to, but I do like challenges. And so then the teacher says, what do I see? A brilliant, curious student who needs to be challenged as much as possible. So it's not just about the data. It's making it human and making it how it affects that individual student. And then the teacher talks about how can I best meet his needs? Passion projects will be pivotal to ensuring his continued growth. These projects are self-driven and promote creativity and innovative thinking. These projects will help develop essential These projects will help develop essential life skills such as planning, decision-making, persistence, problem-solving, time management, and personal reflection." The main thing I wanted to point out to you here on this slide is that this allows, when you go into Linkit up here on this slide, it shows you that the teacher can compare their own class. This is their class data. But it also allows them to look and see, "How did my students in my class do in comparison to the other students in our school? And then how did we do in comparison to the district?" So this again helps to support that common thread of what is happening between all of our schools and making sure that we're not having different experiences depending on the school that you're attending. Again, this shows you how the teacher would then use, I don't know what's happening with that. I think the slideshow is getting tired because that's happening all on its own. I'm not touching anything. And so this was, we also wanted to add in some general reflection. So I had asked both principals, Ms. Smith and Mrs. Brown, about what did they see on their fall benchmark data in general, in a general sense, in regards to the learning loss from last spring? And so both had mentioned that they did see some learning loss in the fall benchmark. One of the things that we did that I think is different than how a lot of schools handled their fall benchmarking was that we gave the same test in the fall to the students that they took last spring. So for an example, if I was in taking the third grade English and math test, instead of giving them the fourth grade benchmark in September, we gave them the end-of-the-year third grade benchmark so that we could compare their score in the fall to where they were in the spring and to analyze if there had been any further learning loss over the summer. And so that really ended up being very helpful for us because it also let the teachers know exactly some weaknesses that may have still been occurring based on the closure last year. And so they did notice learning loss in specific around phonics in grade two and vowel consonants. This is usually a skill that's taught at the end of first grade. And in math, for an example, grade four fractions was an area of weakness. And this is again usually a skill that is taught in third grade in the spring. But as I had mentioned earlier, the structure that we're using with really being able to focus on English and math during the time that they're in school and the very, it's eerie almost when you're walking through the schools, the calmness when you're walking into the classrooms and without so many transitions during the day, going to specials, going to lunches, they're getting more time to learn. And what they've found is that they have made significant gains in both reading and math. And that a lot of the gaps have been fully closed. And the other thing that we did was we did targeted reteaching of areas that may have been weak. But we also didn't want to focus on going back and reteaching everything that they should have learned last year because then they wouldn't be learning the grade level standards that they should be focusing on this year. And so all of the research was saying, do not go back and redo third grade and fourth grade. You need to go in and assess where there may be gaps and then blend that into what they're doing, but to really focus on grade level learning. And that has been what we've done. And we're very hopeful that our mid-year benchmarks and end-of-the-year benchmarks are going to show that all of our losses may have been completely gone. And again, I apologize because I don't know what's happening with the computer and I'm not doing that.
And I don't see that anyone has annotations enabled, so I'm not really sure what's happening on the meeting side. But thank you for completing that. Thank you.
And that, I will stop sharing so we can get out of that now. That ends the presentation that we had for this evening unless people have questions.
I am going to call on myself and I want to say, Dr. Flaherty and everyone else on the central office team, thank you so much for the presentation. That was a lot to unpack and I think that there's a lot of information out there that is very useful for us to try and get out to the public, especially regarding what Ms. Blansky did a presentation about what co-teaching looks like and the different models. Because I know that's come up since I've been on the committee about how that impacts the size of the class and the student population in the class. And Dr. Flaherty, your closing reflection about the achievement gap. I think recently there was a story on NPR about that, like a nationwide study on how a lot of educators' fears wasn't as bad as people originally had anticipated in terms of where we are now versus where we left off last March. So I think that's some good news that we need to be celebrating and getting out more and more. And consistently, we hear from our leaders about the effortless work and the energy that our teachers are putting in. So thank you very much for continuing getting that message out to everybody else.
Thank you.
Dr. Trocheck.
Yes, well, I just had to comment, Mr. Malady, because I was sitting here watching the data stories and remembering probably your first ever school curriculum and instruction meeting. And we had seas of red and yellow and green up on the wall, but I don't think we ever made quite as much sense as Dr. Flaherty made in this meeting. And it's really nice, the way that it was presented for people to understand that assessment and the data that we collect is really put to use for instruction and for instructional purposes and for planning. And so I think for a lot of folks, there's been a lot of discussion around, you know, assessment and should we have it and should we do it? And, you know, it's not fair, don't bring the kids in just to test them. But I think for everyone to understand that it's meaningful and purposeful and done in a really good way. So I just want to, I was thinking back to that meeting with the red, green and yellow and I think we caught you off guard that very first meeting and how many ever years ago it was. So it was interesting.
That was at least 20 pounds and one kid ago. That was a long, that was a long time. So unless anyone else has any questions or comments, I want to say thank you all for being here tonight. I hope you all had a lovely Thanksgiving. This committee meets again on January 6th. So until then, happy holidays and be well and make it a motion to adjourn.
I would make that, oh, Dr. Flaherty beat me to it. I want to second that, but I just want to thank the people who lost internet connectivity and rejoined the meeting, including our friends at BevCam. Thank you so much for making sure you stayed with us. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Ms. Abel, would you do the honors of doing our roll call out, please?
Sure, let's see who's still with us. Dr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Ms. Hildreth?
Yes.
Ms. Sudak?
Yes.
Ms. Goodno-McGuire, I'll get it right this time. Oh, I think she just dropped off. Okay. And Rachel Abel, yes. And our students, we have Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Ms. Betts?
Yep.
And Deja, are you still with us?
It's Deja, but yeah.
Deja, thank you, Deja. I apologize. Okay, I think that's a unanimous.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned at 8:39. Good night, everybody.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Twanblee as well. I just saw you on the corner of my screen. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Bye. Bye.